Yeah, I just, I mean, at this point, knowing that they're increasing the cost of meals. And it's going to hit people who are on fixed income. I think that we should be having a more expedited discussion about that since we're having to talk about people who can't necessarily absorb that and as costs continue to go up. I just don't think we, I personally, for me, I'd like to have this discussion before other discussions happen because ethically, I think there's a concern about.
Urgency.
Yeah, exactly.
Gotcha. Yeah, let's have, can we have Pam come in and talk about?
I, I don't know exactly how you.
I concur in your request that we should have staff look into this and bring something back for us.
Yeah, why don't, why don't Scott, why don't you set up a date with Pam, where she's coming to talk to us and tell us what's going on. Before we do anything else.
Okay.
Okay, any reordering of the agenda, Scott?
No reordering this year.
I do not see any public comments. So we'll move on to consent council, minutes of February eighth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting. This is claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Uh, and that is it. And we'll bring it to the council for a possible motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Linda.
Okay, Councilmember, Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornick.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye. Uh, moving on to public hearings, this is a resolution. Twenty four oh two, a resolution, City Council, City Buellton, California, adopting measure. A five-year local program project for fiscal years twenty four, twenty five, and twenty eight through twenty eight, twenty nine, and this will be Director Rosehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is an annual housekeeping item. Every year, we bring a program of projects, which is a five-year rolling period. Starting next fiscal year through five years out, showing our road maintenance projects and transit related projects that our measure A allocation goes towards and supports. Uh, in the staff reports is provided the latest update from SBC regarding what the anticipated revenues are year by year. So for next fiscal year, we're anticipating four hundred and forty thousand and four hundred and fifty dollars for our measure A program. Exhibit A within resolution twenty four dash oh two provides the. A spreadsheet for the program of projects. You'll see it's primarily supporting the annual road maintenance, um, sorry, seal, uh, R and R type projects every single year. Every other year, we, uh. We allocate certain amount of that funds dedicated to sidewalk repairs throughout the city. Uh, years that we are able to support that more with general fund or other funding sources we do. Um, but this coming year. Or actually, this fiscal year is an allocation for concrete work. You'll see the multipurpose trail has, um, allocations in there as well for the river trail and our. Alternative transportation support, which is the Saniness Valley Transit, Wine Country Express, and Breeze two point O. The city is required to have a minimum alternative, um, transportation dedicated from our funds of five percent. And you'll see the calculation below based on our estimates over the rolling five-year period that we are allocating above that at twelve percent. In actuality, we probably do even more than that. Once we get the projects rolling and do additional sidewalk repairs, bike lane repairs, things like that, we take credit for. Um, so with that, uh, we, uh, have that staff report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for staff? Any public comment?
Um, no, sir.
Um, this is just a receive, correct?
No.
Or does it need to?
Doctor resolution.
Open the public hearing.
Okay, and, uh, anything from the public?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, now bring it back to the council. Uh, anything from staff before we? Bring it back? Yeah, bring it back to council for a possible motion.
Motion to approve resol- resolution number twenty four dash oh two.
Second.
Linda.
Okay. Vice Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornick.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye. Hey, well, we got a council member comments or items. I'll start down to my left with, uh, Councilmember Lewis.
No comment.
Okay, Hudson.
Nelson.
David.
Uh, two items. One, I just wanted to bring back for discussion and, um. I know that with a lot of the cultural heritage and proclamations we have, there may be interest of having possibly displays or. Banners or anything of that sort. And so we had discussed a while ago about having a policy put into place so that we would be prepared for any kind of applications or interests. And so I just wanted to maybe. Talk about having that brought ahead of time so that in case a group is interested, we have a policy in place already for it. So that was something I just wanted to. Bring up to the front of the line of a discussion if possible.
All right. It is, it is something the council's talked about before. I will take a look at that. We'll have a discussion with the city attorney. And we will bring something back to the council.
Thank, and then the other item is that it was brought to my attention that the senior, well. Saniness Valley Community Outreach Program, I think that's their full title, anyway, that they're going to have to do their first increase of Meals on Wheels for their food production. Um, and so it's cost of, as costs keep going up, there has been, they're having to pass that on to some of our most vulnerable residents. And so I just wanted to maybe. Look at, I know we talk about our, our budget and we talk about things and I for one have a lot of things I'd love to do, but it's concerning to hear that. This cost is maybe impacting seniors who are on fixed income. And before we commit to. Other items and other investments, I think we may want to take a look at our funding for the senior center and to explore how we can help. Subsidize so that our residents who maybe can't afford these cost increases are not left behind and left in a vulnerable state from food insecurity.
Hey, John.
Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, I guess the, the, uh, all the high patrolmen were out here yesterday. And I've already heard good results of, of, uh. The, somebody watched four, somebody get four tickets in an hour. The guy was chasing cars down. So I think where it'll get out fast and it'll make it, uh. It will get safer. So I just want to thank, or put that program together, open that up.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, before you go further, um, on Vice Mayor Silva's, uh, last item. There seemed to be a request for some sort of further discussion. Is there consensus on the part of the council to bring this back for discussion?
Um, yeah, so I guess my other question is, I know that we, we talked about that. Um, in our annual budget review, but also there was a separate time that we talked about. We have funding, uh, the senior center and SY Valley Community Outreach. When are we supposed to talk about funding again?
The, the, the community outreach, uh, the Meals on Wheels program or the C, oh, let's put it this way, the senior center budget line item. Doesn't come before the council at the same time as the other social service, um. Grant requests that the city gives out or grants that the city, um, awards. Uh, instead, the city has made the senior center program a line item within the budget. So. The reason it was brought forward in the last two years is because, um, cash flow issues with the program and, and how they get funded from other agencies were such that. They needed the money, uh, they needed an advance on the money before the fiscal year came to the new fiscal year started. Um, the way we've remedied that is from now on, the, the, the funds that they need or the funds that we've allocated to them are being paid at the end of the year. In say March, as opposed to the beginning of the year in July, because that's when their cash flow is needed. So that's already in place. Um, I had a, a chat yesterday with the. Executive Director of Community Outreach, and she just wanted to give me the heads up that they were. Having to announce to the recipients of Meals on Wheels that for the first time ever, they were going to need to increase the costs of that program. On a per meal basis and to include those who are currently receiving meals for free. Uh, they can no longer afford to, to provide those meals for free. Um, because I guess the, for the first time ever, the number of, um. Free meals that they're providing have exceeded the number of meals that they're, that are being paid for. So it's a difficult situation. Um, it. That's, that's about where we're at with it. I, I, I don't know, um, you know, we have. Um, extended, uh, during the last budget cycle, the council, uh, voted to increase the amount of the budget. So short of any, any kind of, um. Uh, emergency measure the council may want to take, we will continue to pay what's been budgeted for the year. So.
When we, when we have that budget conversation?
Uh, that will be in May, I believe. Chanel, is that correct? The budget conversations in May?
Yeah, correct. That's, uh, our mid-cycle budget amendment cycle.
Want to talk about having one before?
Yeah, I just, I mean, at this point, knowing that they're increasing the cost of meals. And it's going to hit people who are on fixed income. I think that we should be having a more. Expedited discussion about that since we're having to talk about people who can't necessarily absorb that. And as costs continue to go up. I just don't think we, I personally, for me, I'd like to have this discussion before other discussions happen because ethically, I think there's a, a concern about.
Urgency.
Yeah, exactly.
Gotcha. Yeah, let's have, can we have Pam come in and talk about?
I, I don't know exactly how you.
I concur in your request that we should have staff look into this and bring something back for us.
Yeah, why don't, why don't Scott, why don't you set up a date with Pam, where she's coming to talk to us and tell us what's going on? Before we do anything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. John, anything?
Well, that was my thank you for.
Oh, yeah.
Are we done with committees yet?
Uh, no, written communications, you know, written, no written communication, no committee reports, John, we'll start in your end.
Uh, I went to a CCWA meeting today and, uh, had a pretty nice presentation about, uh. A lot of different stuff for the water and it's, and we're, we're looking good again with the water. We have, uh, some water transfer. Rules that we're going over so that we can trade water within the, the districts and things like that. So. Um, that was a pretty good meeting. And then I was also in a chamber meeting. Yesterday, and they're getting ready for the chili festival, the chili wine festival. So that's going to be fun and, uh, that'll be a big deal for everybody. And, uh, they're doing well too. Kathy went to Phoenix to, to some meeting, uh, last week. So. They're getting out there, getting the word out, and they're doing a good job.
Good morning.
Doing the mosaic too, is that, is it this week?
That's, uh, twenty eighth, I believe, is that, is the, um, or the, the. Are you referring to the, uh?
Post office.
The post office. Yeah. It's, no, it's the, uh, it, it, there is going to be a.
Arts and.
Arts and culture. It's going to be a community, uh, or a kickoff, uh, event at Community Clayworks next Thursday. And I believe eleven AM, I think it's when they're going to do, they're going to. Kind of walk through the process of how they're going to create the tile work to go on the building. So if you didn't receive an invitation, uh, via email here this week, let me know. I'll forward one to you.
Yeah, cool. Okay, I'll go to the other end to Alisa, and I know she went to an aquatics meeting here recently, so I'll let her talk to that.
Do you want me, I was.
Yeah, any other meeting that you might have as well.
I didn't have one, but I'm asking, is it fine? I was there as a high school rep. Does it matter?
You can talk.
Okay.
Just, thank you.
Yeah.
Tell us why you're with the rep. Tell us why you were there.
Yeah, we went to the most recent Aquatics Foundation meeting where they were going over their most. Current, I believe their ninety percent plans, the architect plans are ninety percent done. They went over, um, what they currently have in the drawings, what things needed to change, and. They went over their beginning foundation, uh, fundraising list, the people that they were going to reach out to. Um, and they asked that if anyone has any ideas of people that may be interested in getting involved financially and donating that we. Give that list to them so that they can add them to their list to reach out. Yeah, and they got another large donor that said that he was going to donate, I want to say another hundred thousand dollars to make sure that the plans. Continue to fruition and that they can keep up with their fundraising efforts.
It's making it happen.
That's a good deal.
That's it. Open up for.
David. Uh, I ended a three CE meeting on Wednesday, that's yesterday, yes, yesterday, and, um, main discussion around that with. California from a solar perspective isn't so much the new kind of era of solar is not about generation, but it's really about storage. And so a lot of the incentives that will be pushed out to. Behind the meter customers will be focused around battery storage and kind of helping transition to that since we have a surplus at noon. But it's how do you have anything to use it at solar between four and nine PM? And so that's going to be kind of the big focus of three C going forward is to have a solar storage adoption pushed out to customers.
That's awesome. If I can piggyback on that, we, I didn't, I, I think I spoke to you just randomly about. Uh, like globalization, microgridding, our electricity grid, and there's some talk, maybe sometime somewhere about. I guess you can totally help, Corey, uh, about different localities, maybe having some kind of storage center. Is that something that the city has looked into at all?
Uh, we have when, um, uh, three CE came out with their first phase of that project, which was last year. They were looking for locations where such a facility could be built. I suggested a location, um. Uh, it might have been as, as part of our, uh, I can't remember which one it was. It was some city property as well as just some vacant, uh, land elsewhere. Um. We didn't have the, the, the type of facilities or density of service that they needed at the time to do that. But as they move forward, they'll be looking for more locations. Uh, as, as Vice Mayor Silva mentioned, that is kind of the future that they're looking at, that need to provide. Uh, power when the sun is not shining. And so more and more of these battery, uh, storage facilities are going to be needed, uh, all over the place. So we will continue to look at that and, uh. Uh, if an appropriate location, um, pops up that they are interested in, we'll, we'll point them in that direction.
Their big push was about just as a district ensuring the use of their incentives that are available. So like. They have a lot of different areas and they have a whole concierge element that cities can connect with. It's like we could, they could help map out like, oh, this is an incentive you could take advantage of. So we can keep exploring that too.
Is it a cities or individuals, if it's in cities?
Um, there's both. So there's like the vehicle adoption could be a, a commer- like a, a consumer, but then they have like electrify your fleet, which would be more of a discussion from like a city perspective. And battery storage is one of those as well.
Yes. Okay, and I went to a Coast Rail meeting, um. Um, and it was mostly discussion about some additions to the. Tracks and they're still working on us. Most, some people don't know that there is a gap between Hollister, Gilroy and, and San Luis Obispo of like a hundred and fifty three miles, I think. Well, there's no train service. And so you have to get off, you get on the bus, you drive the bus all the way down San Luis, then you get back on the train. Yeah. You got that look on your face. You can think here in California that they have continuous track. That you could go from Northern California through Hollister and then down to San Luis Obispo. That's what they're working on. They're also, um, working on getting some. Some lines to go from inland from like Watsonville, Salinas, you know, along the. Fifty, one fifty-six, I think it is. Along that corridor through there because there's no service coming out of the coastal side of Monterey to marry up with the trains that are running down the coast. And, um, there has been an interest in the state, fortunately. Of, of funding for this because you know, they're like for years, I've been saying they're trying to get people out of the cars, but in order to do that, you're going to have to have some. Funding to build those tracks and trains and there is, and I think we're going to take a field trip, but I, um. To Sam Redino Riverside area, they have some trains called Arrows and they're run on hydrogen. And they're kind of a lightweight commuter train. So I think we're all going to go out there, the, the, at least the board of directors. Are going to go out there and take a look at these because that could be something that you could run up and down the coast. Um, even, you know, San Luis, San Luis Obispo, all the way down to Ventura or even, you know. Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, something like that and have a, like a hydrogen commuter trains, but. Once again, it's just going to take money. Okay, uh, all right, let's move on to business items. This will be introduction of initial concept, uh, of an update to the Bulton Urban Growth Boundary U G B Initiative, and this will be Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Before we get started, Rose, is that, oh, that is not. What is, oh, I know what the problem is.
Please stand by, we're having tech.
There we go. Does that show up on, on city feed?
On the Zoom is just the PowerPoint, the original PowerPoint, not that.
Well, we kind of need this to go out to the world. So. Let me, let me punt here. We're going to need to. Let's pull this up. So what's that? It was working earlier. Let's see, um.
I'm having, I'm having major connection issue.
Okay. This one. Huh?
The share screen.
Okay, one more time, or the, um. Okay. So let's try this. Primary monitor. Oh, wait a minute. Now it could reverted. Let's try this again.
Took room one.
Nope, same thing. All right. Magnetic primary monitor. And. The view. Show. I don't like the winner. Okay, I'm going to try this one more time. Uh, let me try sharing. Sure. And. Let me try from. How's that? No, okay.
Try changing pages.
There you go.
Well, it shows. They get the juice.
Uh, okay, let, let me get, let me get to just a little bit better here. Let me just move, I'll stop sharing.
Because you can still see, it's just showing the PowerPoint. Version of it. So you can see a little preview slide.
Right, okay, that's fine. Let me just do this and how, how's that look? Hold up, can everyone see that? Okay. We'll do it this way. All right, all right, let me start again here. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, and I apologize not only for the, uh, AV difficulties we're having here, but. Want to apologize in advance, this is likely to be a little bit longer than the kinds of presentations you're used to seeing. Uh, but I'm, I'm sure when we get into this, you'll all agree this is a little more complicated than most of them. I'm going to give a little bit of background for the benefit of the public who probably in most cases have not been exposed to this previously. Unless they were here back in two thousand eight, when the original urban growth boundary initiative was brought forward. So on, uh, on the map in front of you here, we have the, the, the current city limits. Um, you can, this is the way Bulton has existed. To my knowledge, this is the city limits that the city was incorporated with, uh, back in nineteen ninety-two. Um, the city limits define the, uh, delineate the incorporated boundaries of the city. Uh, the limits themselves were established by LAFCO, the, the county's local agency formation commission. Back in nineteen ninety-two, at the time that the city was incorporated and it was done through the process, uh, formal process of incorporation. Amendment of the city limits, the city boundaries, uh, is performed by LAFCO. Could be at the request of the city, could be at the request of, of property owners outside the city. Uh, through, uh, what's known as an annexation or a detachment process, depending on whether someone wants to come into the city or get out of the city. Uh, this is the city's current sphere of influence. You'll notice that it is the same as the city limit line. The sphere of influence, uh, the purpose of this is to define areas that lie outside the city limits. Which at some point the city might reasonably be expected to provide municipal services to. Uh, this again is established by LAFCO. The city doesn't have control over its sphere of influence. LAFCO, LAFCO, um, approves those. Uh, the sphere of influence can be amended by LAFCO and it is amended periodically by LAFCO through a process. A process they're about to start. Right now, this process will probably take a couple of years to move through. Um, so what I'm discussing here tonight and the initiative dealing with an urban growth boundary. Does not affect the sphere of influence. Um. That is a separate process, but it, I, I did want to bring it up here because in the minds of a lot of, uh, people who are proponents of the urban growth boundary. Back in two thousand eight, the sphere of influence was the major issue they had with this, e- even though. The, um. Initiative didn't address sphere of influence specifically. Um. Urban growth boundary. You can see it's the same as the, uh, city limits of the city. Uh, this was established, um, this is. Established as a boundary for the provision of city services. Uh, what this means because LAFCO officially annex decides whether or not to annex, uh, to the city or not. The urban growth boundary essentially, uh. Prohibits the city from providing municipal services outside of its boundaries. Um, for the duration of the initiative. So if LAFCO were to come in and, and declare an annexation to the city, the city could then provide those municipal services. But, um, short of that, we cannot extend our municipal services beyond the city limit lines. This, uh, was established by a voter initiative back in two thousand eight. It can only be amended by the voters, although there are a couple of, um. Exemptions that exist within the initiative language, one having to deal with state, um, housing mandates, another having to deal with school and park. Um, uh, uh, with, with. Annexing of property or expansion of the urban growth boundary to encompass, um, school and park properties. This is.
They have our questions for me.
Uh, if you, if you would, that would be great. I, I. We'll get through a lot of this. I'll try, I'll try and go back. Okay, um, this is set to expire December thirty-first of two thousand fifteen. Or excuse me, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, this is relevant right now because. Between now and the time this expires, there's only one election, uh, on which to place the, uh, an initiative. That would extend this, otherwise we will face some period without the urban growth boundary in place. Um, and again, I noted it's, it's currently coterminous with the city limits. Very quickly, I, I discussed, uh, sphere of influence and what it was. Uh, when, as, as I've moved through this process, trying to bring the, the city council and the public a starting point for discussion, which is what tonight's. Um, uh, business item here is about. Recognizing that in the minds of a lot of people, the sphere of influence is the big issue. Um, I started my, my, um. Thought process here with trying to determine what an appropriate sphere of influence might be. Now, I don't have the input from LAFCO on this, that, that, as I said, will be. Uh, ongoing for the next couple of years. However, uh, this is what, um. What I have come up with, and there's a couple of reasons for this we can get into, but you'll see, we'll start off on the west side of the city. Um, in, in this area over here, um. I, I'm starting with the assumption that we ought to look at moving out maybe perhaps a mile to the west of the city. This will make a little more sense when I get to the next stage, but, or the next slide rather. But, uh, a, a mile seems to be a good distance from the outside of the city and the primary purpose of this. Um, expansion of the sphere of influence would be to allow the city, uh, to have some degree of. Voice or influence over decisions that the county may make in unincorporated areas to the west. And if the county or if the council will recall. The, uh, um. Uh, the, uh, county's. Uh, approval of cannabis cultivation permits to the west of the city and the impacts that that had on the city, um. The, my intent here was simply to make sure that, that the county is, is consulting with us because we have, uh. The potential at some point in the future of serving that with municipal services. This is the starting point for the initial urban growth boundary concept. You'll know, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back up here because I missed, um. Areas to the north and to the east. To the north, you see, um, four or five properties, uh, just to the north of the, um. The, uh, beginning of the Buell Ranch, of the Kings River Ranch up at the Buell property on the east side of the one-on-one freeway. There's about a little less than a hundred acres, uh, to the north up there. The sphere of influence concept here again fits in with, um. Uh, with the concept on the next page, which is the urban growth, urban growth boundary concept, uh, but. I, I'm visualizing, uh, the city's primary area of future growth. Uh, to be to the north, given the constraints that we have with our traffic and circulation at. Highway two forty-six and the one-on-one, it doesn't make a lot of sense to pack a lot more development into that location. Uh, into that corridor. So, um, the next logical place would be to move to the north. Uh, which allows, um, not only plenty of room for development, if that's the direction that, 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 uh. The city decides to go in that matter, but it allows access to the one, to highway one-on-one. Um, which doesn't require freeway interchanges because once we get to the north of the city, it ceases to be a freeway and becomes a highway, which. Allows access a little bit easier in places. Urban growth, oh, I'm sorry, one more time, I did it again. Uh, the area here to the east, um. It's actually, uh, to the north of, east of McMurray Road and the Hampton Inn. Um, north of Thumbelina Neighborhood and Village Townhomes, um. There are two pieces of property here. Uh, the southerly piece of property is the Circle JB Polo Ranch. Um, the property owner for this, this ranch has approached the county with a proposal. Uh, or not necessarily a proposal, but a concept that, um, there may be. Uh, justification or, or desire to place a, a destination resort facility on this site. Uh, the county has looked at it and while they. At least, uh, the county staff that looked at it are intrigued by the idea, doesn't fit nicely within the county zoning ordinance and aside from that. Um. Given the, the size of the facility they're talking about here, it's pretty clear they would need to tie into a, a sewer system as opposed, as opposed to trying to place this on a septic system. Given that they have approached, they, the, the property owners have approached, um, me in discussing. Whether or not this might be a potential, uh, for annexation to the city. Um, it, uh, it, it's only access is through the city, it would, uh, is, is on McMurray Road. Uh, its location, uh, and, and does, and need for services such as sewer and water service. Kind of lend itself to annexing to the city as opposed to going any other direction, um. Uh, so I have, I, I've drawn this into the potential sphere of influence as well as the large area. A piece of property immediately to the north, which again is isolated and takes its access off of only, uh, Mc- McMurray Road at this point. Uh, that could potentially wind up in the future being, uh, something the city wants to look at for some low density housing opportunities, but. Uh, couldn't be terribly high density because at least at this point, we don't have the freeway on ramp and off ramp capacities to accommodate. A huge number of homes. Now we'll go to the, or initial urban growth boundary concept. This is, um. These are the areas that I, I would suggest starting from to discuss where we. Would like to move the boundary, not the boundaries, but the urban growth boundary out to encompass. We'll start again with the west. Uh, on the west, I've, I've drawn this, uh, line to the area here to encompass up. Areas on either side of highway two forty-six to about a half mile west of the city. There are some, a, a couple of large parcels in here under, under one ownership. Um, that would be Brick Barn Winery and, and the, uh, unfarmed parcel just between Brick Barn and, uh, River View Drive. But there's also some smaller properties in here that, that, um, are. Five or so acres in size, perhaps a little bit larger, uh, that might, um. That might be prime sites for development in the future, in the event we needed to look at. Um, properties being brought into the city in order to meet future housing demand. So as you're aware, we had a rather small, um, Rena number this year, about a hundred and sixty-five units is what we needed to provide. We can more than accommodate that within our city limits right now. Um, over the next eight years, there will certainly be some more development within the city limits. Uh, whether or not we have enough to accommodate what the next cycle will bring is, is certainly in question. Especially because given the small number we got this cycle, we're much more likely, at least in my mind, to receive a much larger number in the next cycle, which we'll look at in about six years. Um. So this area to the west is what I see as being our primary relief valve. To give us a location to move, uh, uh, to build more housing in, in the event that we wind up with a, a number. That is too large to accommodate, given our, uh, available land within the city without moving. To four or five story buildings throughout the city. So. That's what we're looking for to the west. Uh, to the north again, this is, uh, an area that I've, I view as being, having a lot of potential. As being a future growth area in the city. Those properties, however, are currently covered by Williamson Act contracts, which are. Uh, contracts with the state that are intended to preserve agricultural land by giving incentives, uh, to property tax. Um, so they, the owners of properties under Williamson Act contract get very low property tax. Uh, obligations in exchange for a ten-year period of, uh, agricultural use. That renews on its own every year. So, uh, and they are still in place, meaning that if the property owners here decided today that they wanted to develop this property. It would take ten years before this, their contracts would expire. So the area to the north while promising is, uh, is a longer term prospect. And the area to the west is our short-term relief valve that I'm looking at. And then to the east, again, we have the Polo Ranch property, and then there's a small piece of property that probably should have been included with, within the urban growth boundary. At some point or the city limits at some point in the past, it's about two acres. It's located immediately behind Hampton Inn and it has no, um. It's, it's, it's. Much smaller than the minimum lot size under county zoning. It could be developed with a house or something under the county. But given its location, it might be better suited to something that is, uh, maybe tied in with the Hampton Inn. So. I would suggest we look at, at moving that into the city limits as well. You notice the blue area to the bottom. Um, that, that extends south of the river. Uh, I, I've shown that differently and there's a note on here that says it, you, urban growth boundary extended only if urban uses are approved by Santa Barbara County. The reason that's here is that, uh, three, three and a half years ago, there was a, uh, a group of property owners that are shown in this. Area that's outlined here roughly, uh, that came to the city, uh, asking. For consideration for annexation and they had some projects in mind. One was a, uh, a hotel, one was a truck stop property. Um, just on the other side of the river. And then there was a, a resort, an RV resort similar to the flying flags concept. Proposed on the other, on the opposite side, the east side of the freeway, as well as some, um, sports fields that were part of the mix. Um. We asked them to go and do some public outreach before coming back to the city council and requesting that formally. They went away, but they have not come back. I understand they've been talking to the county. And, um, so. Since the city is not in dire need of a hotel at this point for, uh, for revenue purposes or. Flying flags, another flying flags type of facility, I, I'm not certain that there's much value in pursuing that south of the river. There's, there's considerable. Um, concern on the, on. Members of the public that I have spoken with about extending to the south. However, it's, um. The, the concern that I have is that if these property owners are, are successful, even partially in. Getting approvals for urban uses within the county unincorporated area. Um, development in that area would. Uh. Because it's, because of its proximity. Uh, clearly have some impacts on the city of Bulton. We would be, uh, we would be receiving additional traffic impacts. Um, you know, air, air quality impacts. Other types of things that we don't usually think about. They may even request sewer extension into the area because they, they don't have a way to, to deal with the sewage. So what I've proposed here is that this remain outside of our urban growth boundary. moving forward, unless or until the county approves urban uses within this area, at which point the language of the initiative would allow the urban growth boundary to automatically extend to the south to encompass any areas that the county has approved urban growth. That way we have the ability to capture sales tax and or property tax revenues that might be generated to help us mitigate the impacts that the that would be resulting from development outside the city limits. This is the, I'm calling it the initial land use concept. These are, for lack of a better term, these are holding zones. They don't reflect the ultimate land use. They reflect what might be reflected on our general plan or our zoning map going forward. If these are incorporated into our our sphere of influence, it's something that we ought to have on the map to let people know, hey, this is we don't anticipate doing with anything with this in the near future. Prior to any kind of an applica or prior to any kind of an annexation, the city would be required to actually zone that property or prezone the property to whatever use would be envisioned upon annexation. So that's not it. Not a point of discussion here, so I'm simply showing this map to illustrate that we're assigning values or zoning values to this roughly equivalent to what the county zoning for those properties would be.
I just want to jump in now. So if we started, i- if in going out and discussing this, talking with the public, getting input, if we got more specific than potentially changing these lines, but keeping what the county has in place, we would wind up doing a large and long California Environmental Quality Act review of this before being able to put it on the ballot. By limiting it to this and by not getting into details of projects, a much shorter sequoia study can be done. And that's fair, and that's right, because any actual annexation, any actual zoning would go through LAFCO and would, a sequoia study would be done then. And when any actual project came, a sequoia study would be done on the project. So there may be frustrating points for the five of you and for the public when they talk with the city manager about this. Because there aren't real details yet. And the reason there aren't real details is we have a short period of time in which to get this on the ballot and the environmental impact report that might be required could take a year or more. And then we would miss the window for getting this on the ballot. So when he says we're going to sort of leave it where it is today, it's it's the placeholder. It truly is, but there's a good legal reason why there's a placeholder and and a good legal reason why more specificity would actually undermine the very thing that is being attempted to to be done here. Back to you, sir.
On top of that legal reason, the practical reason is that we have for this is that there there have been no projects formally proposed or discussed at this point. As I've mentioned, we have the Williamson Act contracts to the north. We've had, you know, we've had urban growth boundary in place to preclude any development to the west, and we have not been approached by anyone. The only group we've been approached with has been the Polo Ranch, and that's a very conceptual, hey, what would the city think if we were to propose something like this? Including it within our our urban growth boundary right now simply allows that discussion to take place, but it would need considerable further study before it it went any any further. Within currently, the urban growth boundary establishes a hard and fast boundary. If anyone wants, if a property wants to be included within it, that's not currently, it requires a ballot measure. What we would be looking at if we just went with a straight urban growth boundary expansion is we could expand the urban growth boundary such that if you include areas within it, it's automatically considered within the urban growth boundary and could be annexed with approval from LAFCO in the future. Given that the communities expressed desire in the past for having more controlled growth beyond our existing footprint here. I've made some proposals that are a little bit different than that, primarily to the west, the Reserve Residential Number One. I would suggest that this be included within the urban growth boundary, but unless it's required to meet a state housing mandate, it still require voter approval for any project to be built there. And it may seem a little bit odd. Why not just leave it outside the urban growth boundary and because it's going to require a ballot initiative anyway. The primary reason for that is because the exception to meet the state housing mandates is important. If we put it inside the urban growth boundary, then we don't have to jump through that hoop. The if the state comes to us and says, hey, you need to meet your housing mandates, we can simply say, okay, we have the ability through this initiative to identify properties within this area to receive approval for development for housing. There's not, there's not really a question as to whether or not it could be incorporated into the urban growth boundary or not. It whether it has to go to the ballot or not, it just takes away one of the perceived obstacles that HCD might have in saying, you know, if we wanted to identify a piece of property outside the city limits or future development, they may not be accepting of it if it's not within the urban growth boundary. Otherwise, it functions essentially the same. Reserve Residential, the little piece across on the on the east side of McMurray. I've noted it must apply for predevelopment and his development permit before annexation. That's pretty much the case regardless for any property. Reserve Residential Two, which is the property to the north, as I've talked about, is under Williamson Act contract, and it would require a full cancellation of that before it could be brought into the city for development. That's at least 10 years out. And the Reserve Residential Four, yes, Reserve Residential Four, the Polo Ranch would, in order to be annexed, I would suggest that the initiative language here require a specific plan be adopted or approved prior to that annexation taking place. That way, we're insured, we're ensuring that not only have we done the required SEQA and we've taken a look at zoning, but we have the required infrastructure studies to accommodate a development like that as well.
I was sorry, Scott.
Yeah.
So it just sounds like you use the terms annexation and UGB the expansion interchangeably, but that's not true.
It's not. No, it's not. Expanding the UGB simply means that those properties could potentially be available for annexation. You know, this or the city could provide municipal services outside of its of its regardless of annexation. For instance, if if we, if we needed to, let's say, the Polo Ranch decided to develop under the county instead of coming to the city for its permits, but needed to tie into city infrastructure under with with the urban growth boundary where it is, we could not service that that use. With the urban growth boundary extended to include that, we could then serve that area for with with water and sewer service without having to annex it. They are completely different. You're right. And to the extent that it I'm confusing things by maybe using it interchangeably, that that's a good distinction.
You didn't separate that, I think.
Okay.
But I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes. Okay. Moving forward, the big question we're going to get from the public is why are we doing this? And city attorney mentioned this a little while ago. Time is of the essence. If we don't do it now, that we're not going to meet the ballot deadline here coming up, and we will wind up with this this measure expiring and we'll have six months without it. Rather than doing that, it's probably more prudent to just try and get it on the ballot and and make what changes the council wishes. The primary reason we're doing this is that the urban growth boundary and the expansion of it allows the city an opportunity to guide future growth of the city. Rather than just saying, okay, we're going to let this expire and let applications come to us from whichever they want to. This process allows the city to say, we're going to look in this direction or that direction for where we think development is appropriate and expand the boundary that direction. So that we don't wind up with an onslaught of applications from all around us. We're we're looking at a situation where there may be a need for future industrial property within the city. We have only a couple of pieces of vacant industrial property left. They're located north of Rufus T. Buell on McMurray Road. A couple of those pieces are rather large, but there's potential that we might have demand for more industry, more jobs to be created in the area here. And as you've seen, our other source of industrial property is down off of Industrial Way, and a lot of that has has seen a conversion to more of a retail nature in recent years. So this allows the city to provide some additional space for that type of development, if that's what's what's wanted. I I mentioned the 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 issue with the the Polo Ranch, no matter which way it goes, it would need to tie into city services there. Well, I mentioned providing a relief valve for state housing allocations and and I can certainly get into more detail if you'd like on that, but I've kind of gone over all of these with regard to the next housing cycle. We know that state housing laws are changing rapidly. It's only, you know, I think it's a matter of when, instead of if the state comes in and eliminates our ability to regulate through zoning even more than they already have. And and our current limitations or our current exemptions under the existing urban growth boundary initiative don't, don't provide that degree of protection because it like I can get into that later if you'd like. Lastly, it's to protect city interests. The city should have flexibility to determine to some degree at least, what is in its own best interests and what 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 development is appropriate. While this is a voter approved initiative, it does throw another obstacle in the way of the city council in terms of being able to act rapidly to to address a particular issue that may come up and need immediate attention. This is what's being proposed here is not a a removal or a negation of the urban growth growth boundary. It's simply an opportunity to discuss loosening the restrictions in certain areas so that we have that ability and that flexibility to move to react to outside influences if we need to. Oops, I'm sorry. As I mentioned, this business item tonight is a starting point. It's there's no decision asked for tonight. This is simply the introduction of the item, and we're going to put it out for public input. We can certainly take public input tonight. If there's any to be had, it doesn't look like at this point that there is. But I have put together on the city's Buellton Engage page a project page for the urban growth boundary update. All the information that's being discussed here tonight is on that page as well as an opportunity to sign up for input, or excuse me, for email alerts and 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 future requests for input. I would ask that anyone wanting to submit input between now and the Planning Commission workshop date of March 21st, email it to me directly. Through the whole process, that would be fine. My email address is scott@cityofbuellton.com. As of March 21st, I'm asking that the council authorize me to bring this to the Planning Commission as a workshop, let them talk about it, attempt to get more public input. The updated information will continue to be found on Buellton Engage. I will additionally create some sort of a survey or another other engagement tool to try and solicit more detailed input without having people need to write me an email, but I would always encourage people to write the email. We will be taking all written comments that we receive and compiling them and posting them online on the Buellton Engage page. The file is there already with two, two comment letters I've received already, one from Larry Bishop, one from Judith Stauffer. And that will be updated about every two weeks. The third phase would be the city council workshop and public input. I'm proposing the council meeting of April 25th for that. And that would give us another month following that meeting roughly for additional public outreach and input to be received. And then the last phase of this would be the city council meeting of May 23rd, where you can also take public input. This date is selected because the city council will need to just to determine whether or not to place a ballot initiative on the upcoming November election. And that should, the May 23rd date is the last date we can reliably make sure that that gets placed. If we go any later than that, we start to run into the county's budgeting process, and it's more difficult to get things on their docket. And so we want that information, we want the, any decision the council makes regarding placing a ballot initiative on their docket in there before that June 1st date. Our recommendations for you this evening. Receive the report, ask me any questions that you would like, or the city attorney. If there are any public comments that come up, please take those. Give consideration to the process that I showed you in the last slide. Make changes as you deem it appropriate, and then give me the direction to move forward or not, as you see fit. And again, I apologize for the length of this. It could have been much, much longer, as could the staff report, but at this point, I'll go ahead and conclude my remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
All right. Any questions for us? And thank you, Scott. That was very comprehensive. Any questions from Ms. Lewis?
No questions.
John?
Just considering this moving west, would that if that became city limits, would we be able to lower the speed limit on 246?
No, not any more than we can currently.
Take 45 out for the.
Yeah.
Oh, no. What what the council member said is right. Could you take 45 out to the speed out to the city limit? You'd have a much better chance of having Caltrans agree to lower the speed limit because it would be considered related to the city where now it's a hard stop. So that's a very good point. We could at least have that conversation, whereas now we don't have any grounds to have the conversation. So thank you, sir.
Yes, and certainly if there were subsequent residential development out that direction, it would, it would the speeds would need to slow down, and they probably would slow down somewhat, giving more credibility to a request because they tend to base it on a certain percentile of of average speeds anyway. So.
We're thinking. You'd have to do a speed survey.
We do, yes. Hudson?
Oh, a bunch.
Okay.
So just piggybacking on what John said, the I know this is probably getting, putting the cart out of the horse, but if that was zoned just residential, I would ask the question is whether or not that was a good decision just because of the nature of the 246 and the and the speed zone and whether or not it'd be appropriate to have a commercial buffer before residential. Also, prime commercial zone on a highway, but just throwing that out there. I did want to ask the southern expansion across the Santa Rosa Bridge there. I don't know the name of that bridge, the correct name of that bridge, if anybody else has.
Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa.
Would if like if the UGB was extended, like and we annexed that line in the county, would there be any interference with proposed or any trail easements that we have along that area?
There there shouldn't be. The trail easements are in place currently.
So it's just our property.
Yeah, it's it, where we have easements, we have the ability to build that trail. Expanding the city limits to the south would not impact that at all. We would still have easements where we have easements, and if we don't have easements over property, we still would not, even if we annexed them.
Okay. And the easements that we have are on the on the north side of.
The Santiness River.
Right.
Yes.
So one of the concerns I have is that we had this restriction on UGB with the idea that with the western extension. If, and that would be a restriction that it would only be expanded if we needed it for Rena allocation or or housing element or HCD.
My my suggestion is that we expand the urban growth boundary out a half mile. But we'll go ahead and require development projects coming through to go to to have a ballot measure for them unless we're doing it for for to meet state housing requirements. Again, it seems a little convoluted, and maybe it's not a direction you want to go in the end, but to me, it it just seems more from HCD's perspective, if we're trying to identify housing units to be built in the future, it's much more credible to look at a piece of property that's inside an established urban growth boundary than one outside.
It's, yeah, so, right, because like in order to meet Rena numbers and to meet our HCD requirements, we have to basically say this. It's yeah, so right, because like in order to meet arena numbers and to meet our HCD requirements, we have to basically say this property is going to be. It likely to be built, even if it's zoned residential, it has to be likely to be built.
Correct, that's right.
So my concern is is, you know, if we if we section off, cordon off this portion of property and we say. You know, okay, what are our arena numbers? What does HCD say? She said, we got a nice plot of land right here next to your residential spot. Yeah, let's pack another hundred units there, right? Or something along those lines. Are we opening the door to that?
There's always the potential. As as I've seen through the last several cycles of of arena allocations. It frequently doesn't work that way, particularly in areas that are are already developed. A lot of times cities will see. Allocations come down that have no bearing to how much they have available. The county, whoever's doing the allocation will just say, hey, we're giving it up this way. And in our case, SB CAG is. Is a little more, they're they're small enough that they can accommodate each city, have us all come in and sit down around a table. And negotiate what that allocation is going to look like. They may determine that, hey, we've got additional space that could be used here. Let's put some units here. The the last. Allocation we had took a different approach and rather than looking at who has the room for the units. They looked at it from the standpoint of where are the units needed in the county? And the units were, it was it was very clear that more housing was needed on the south coast. And in Santa Maria than they were in the central part of the county. And so that's where the bulk of the allocation went. If they go that way again, which they may. We could wind up okay and not have a large allocation. However. If if I were the city of Santa Barbara, the city of Carpinteria, and I received a rather larger than expected allocation the last time. I probably wouldn't be sitting still for for the the central county getting a a much smaller allocation the next cycle.
Well, so, okay, piggybacking on that, so reasonable housing allocation numbers. Those come out, they're not going to come out again until twenty twenty three.
We will start the conversation probably in twenty twenty nine.
Okay.
With the with the understanding that a new. Housing element would need to be adopted by twenty thirty one. For the next cycle.
So I guess what my my overarching question there is that it would be better to delay our, you know, potential annexation. Or request to expand our growth boundary westerly until the next cycle. When we say, hey, because when they say, oh, here's your arena number allocation, and then we have eight years to provide zoning that would, right? To that would provide for that housing. It didn't have to be built.
It 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 could, it could work that way. The the danger of that, though, is in order to to change. If we adopt an extension of the urban growth boundary now, in order to change it to accommodate that. It's going to have to go on the ballot again. Sometime between twenty twenty nine and twenty thirty two. And so I'm guessing it's probably going to be twenty thirty, it would go on the ballot again. And that is, that will wind up being before the final allocation for Rena is made. If we, if if you wait till twenty thirty two, you don't have that to deal with. You don't have that area, the ability to point to that property. As as potential for development because it'll be outside the urban growth boundary. And if you do it in twenty thirty, it'll be done probably before the. The allocation process will probably be done while you're working the ballot measure. So it's you're not, you're not fooling anybody. Let's, I mean, the the rest of the county will know that we're going through a ballot measure to expand our urban growth boundary and will accommodate. Likely with the with the allocation at that point.
Well, I guess what my question then is like. But what if we didn't put it on the, I mean, if we waited to do the ballot measure to get the westerly expansion until after we had arena numbers allocated?
Again, the the problem with that is that once the arena numbers are allocated, we have to update our housing element. And demonstrate that we have the ability to accommodate those. Housing sites. If we can do that with a site that's already. Reasonably expected to be able to be developed within the city. We're not as likely to run into a situation where they're forcing us to identify housing locations that are within the city limits. And the only way to meet our numbers that way is to build up. So it's. The city is, if your object is to avoid a large arena allocation, there is a risk there, but yeah.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is like, if we're going to put it on a ballot measure, it might be a more successful or more easily won, however you want to describe winning. Ballot measure to say, we either take the westerly expansion or we build up, right? And then that's the voters.
That's what we're doing right now. Well, that's what we're doing right now. If you wait, but again, if you wait until that point when we have to have a housing element adopted, there's not going to be time to put a ballot measure on.
They just wouldn't be.
There's not time, yeah. Between the time the real allocation is made and the time we have to have a a certified housing element, we don't have time to. To. Run a ballot and it should have been put on the. We shouldn't say we won't. I I should say, I don't think it's likely we'll have enough time for that, so.
Okay. The other question, yes, I thought I got into my arena density requirement question. And the last question I had was the the north or the north parcels. There are Williamson Act properties, right? And so, but I was a little confused because my understanding of the Williamson Act, and I could be wrong about this, but. Was that the parcels are used for agricultural purposes and so they get, they get taxed incentives for that, basically property taxes are less. But they don't have to use agricultural land. If they don't, they'll just get reassessed. Is that not right?
They, as as it was explained to me, they have to request, they can't just develop it and be reassessed. They have to request exemption or or exception from their contract. Whatever the proper terminology is, and it's a ten year process to to remove themselves from that contract. Each year they pay a higher percentage of property tax until that tenth year where they receive a new assessment in the full, the full property tax value. So it's not, at least at this point, it's not a process that's that's shortcutable to my knowledge.
It's a it's a development restriction.
No, that's that's correct. We dealt with some of these in Western Riverside County, specifically in the Hemet area. When that city was expanding and yeah, it's it's a long process to get there. The landowner really has to be thinking ahead. It's. It it, so yeah.
Good to know, okay.
Now, I I will, I will throw my typical caveat in here and say. That's the case right now. If the state keeps moving in the direction it's going, it's conceivable they could come up with some exemption for Williamson Act contracts. If you're going to build affordable housing.
Of course.
But. That I haven't heard anybody suggest that, so. Of course, maybe I shouldn't have said that out loud, but someone would hear me.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you for your innocence. That's all I got.
Just so that I I'm a I'm a jester in terms of these. So our options are. Renew the urban growth boundary as is, let the urban growth boundary dissipate.
Expire.
Expire, that's a better word for it, or this kind of measured approach, which is in between of a a. Thoughtful expansion based upon need.
Correct.
What was arena, arena numbers for the last housing cycle was?
One hundred and sixty five.
And arena numbers for the cycle prior to that?
Two hundred and seventy.
Do we have the space in our current situation to even accommodate that?
Yes, we do.
So and those are two cycles where we've been low relative.
Be, yeah, relatively low in both cycles. We're the only city that I'm aware of that actually had the arena numbers go down this this cycle. However. We're seeing development right now in the city. The one hundred and sixty five number we've got right now will be met probably within the next year. Which means there's no, we we don't have the same pressure to approve development that we've had previously where we haven't met arena numbers. So once these projects that are under construction right now are already been approved right now are approved. The. The requirement to provide additional housing. Is is, I won't say it goes away, but the pressure is diminished a little bit. They they can't look at us and say, hey, you're not doing your part.
Yeah.
That being said, that development that's occurring right now will eat up a lot of the vacant land that we have available for housing development within the city. Meaning that in the next cycle, if we don't provide some more, we're going to have to. We're going to have to accommodate it within our existing city limits, which by necessity will likely mean going up.
And the one current projects that are fulfilling arena requirements would be things like Polo Village, Garden Apartments, this.
The senior, the Village Senior Complex. We have two projects on Avenue of Flags that have been entitled already. One of them has a a small affordable component to it, so.
And those are all multi-story units. And so at this point, when we're discussing options and when we're trying to think of thoughtful planning for it, really. It's the, it's the density versus the sprawl discussion every time.
Correct.
And so our options are either to stare down the state and hope they blink first, which they never do. Or to assume that there will be arena number that we need to accommodate. And this allows us to have some say a bit more cordially with them compared to a builder's remedy being the way it's.
It gives us some flexibility and and, you know, I. It's not, I I hate to, I hate to put it in those though, that that juxtaposition, it's it's. You know, with with sprawl as the as the end result. The the process we're looking at here really avoids that sprawl.
Yeah.
By by allowing the city to determine if we need to go outside the city limits. Which properties we're going to look at depending on who's who's proposing a project. As opposed to just opening it up and saying, hey, we're going to let everyone who wants to apply, apply. So it's a much more measured approach. But yes, it would, it would involve an expansion potentially of city limits in order to accommodate the state requirement.
But I think when we have these discussions about where the Bulton and how do we maintain small town charm.
Yes.
We're dealing with the solution that we were left with due to the UBG has primarily UGB has been a density element. It has been multi-unit buildings put into spots and so it's kind of. Where would you like the small town charm to be preserved in that sense? Okay, that's all I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Can I, can I piggyback on that? That my concern is that, like, we put these zoning requirements in our expansions. But HCD comes in and says, yeah, nice try, no way, right? We could say, oh, we'll only have a couple of parcels here.
No, the the zoning numbers that you're looking at right here. Those are not what we're looking at for the ultimate designation. These are, I'm calling these, for lack of a better term, a holding zone. This is what the city would identify the zone or the the potential land use density being right now. Because that's what the county zoning ordinance allows. At such time as these properties were annexed into the city, we would have to rezone them. So we can look at that, we can look at HCD with a straight face and say, yes, these properties are reserved residential. They're held for the purpose of accommodating residential development when it's needed. Well, it'll be needed in potentially six years.
Has HCD ever said you don't have enough middle income?
Yes, I believe they have. They certainly can. We're.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, so it's it's the market rate is what they would call it. So there's market rate. There's moderate income, which. In the old days was considered sort of a first time home buyer. Although moderate income today also includes some rental and then low and very low. And so those are the four categories. And if you are not zoned for your share of market rate. They can come down on you the same way that they come down on on the lower incomes.
Okay, one last question. The sphere of influence, my only concern is that it has no legal teeth unless I'm wrong.
Well, what, again, this, the purpose of the sphere of influence is to allow for the county and the city. To to plan for the future service, future provision of municipal services in given areas. So. LAFCO is responsible for establishing the spheres of influence. And they do that through conversations and and analysis using data from the city and from the county. And looking at, you know, future development patterns and that sort of thing. Certainly, an urban growth boundary amendment here would would. Influence how they look at where they ought to be placing the sphere of influence in the future. But it does, what we have on this map right here. Does not obligate them to look at that or or to to give us the sphere of influence that looks anything like it. Again, I included it here only as a. As a way to to visualize kind of the direction. That this starting point sees development moving in the future. There, because I know that in two thousand eight, which when this came up, there was a great deal of concern. From property owners to the south of the river, that there was going to be a push to incorporate to the south. And and at this point, you know, as I've, as I've discussed. While the the thought of a hotel is always, always lights up a city manager's ears because it makes it easier to pay the bills. We've got a couple of hotels in the works here in the city right now. We don't need to move to the south to accommodate that. But I certainly want to protect the city's interests in being able to. To acquire any revenues that are generated as a result of the county having approved urban uses down there. That's.
Can I just add, legally speaking, you're correct. There's no real teeth to a sphere of influence. As a practical matter, though, a county planning department, if if a project comes in within the sphere of influence. The county planning department will reach out to the city and say, all right. You're going to be the ones bearing the burdens of this development. Are you ready to annex? Is it, is is now a time and do you want to be involved in this approval process? Generally, the county isn't going to go approve a project that's going to really burden a city and then say, well, good luck with it. What you'll see is is more of a handholding process because they know. This is going to be on you. It may be that the county approves it and then says, okay, now go ahead and annex. It may be that the county tells them. Work through this with the city and part of your application will be an annexation. It it's project by project, which is why, you know, again, we don't want to get into individuals, but that's the practical benefit. Even though they don't have to, you're absolutely right. They don't, they don't, we can't force them to do things. But as the city manager said earlier, you know, off to the west. They'll at least come talk and and they'll they'll include the city in what they're thinking. Rather than it just showing up on your doorstep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, Scott, do you remember what the, did you do any homework on the, what the original sphere of influence back in two thousand? I think it started in seven, right? Rose and and.
Two thousand eight.
Well, that was when they voted.
Oh, okay.
So there was a conversation about it prior to. So I think it actually did take in some of that river, you know, south of the riverside, Santa Rosa Road.
The original sphere of influence or or the prior sphere of influence discussion. I I I have not seen those documents, do you recall? There was a good amount of concern about about expansion to the south and to the west.
Yes, I I I do remember that. You remember that? Correct me if I'm wrong. So that, you know, and the and the the issue that you had is that. Because we didn't go through with that sphere of influence, like the marijuana fields and all that, that, you know. Now we get constant complaints about it, we would have at least had some input with that. And so doing this and having at least some greater sphere of influence, so what Greg pointed out was. Is that, you know, at least they're not going to say, hey, we're going to put this here, it's not incorporated into your city and too bad, thanks, have a nice day. So stretching us out with a little bit of sphere of influence. As I recall, and that's when I first came on council back in two thousand eight, and that's. You know, people got all up in arms and thinking, oh, they're going to turn us into, you know, Megalopolis in the middle of, you know, the Sanas Valley, which was ridiculous. And the whole intention behind that spear spear of influence was, is that we would have at least been able to have some kind of negotiation with the county. If they said, we're we're, we have someone to come to us and we want to put in sixty houses on this where the old cactus fields were. Well, at least they would say, hey, do you want to incorporate that? So being the way it is now is is, we don't really have any say. You know, they want to put that polo field in and they talk to the right people on planning or they talk to right people in the supervisor's office. They may put it in and like Scott pointed out, we the brunt of that, where, you know, we're have to supply them with water and sewer and all that, get no revenue. And I'll give you another example of that is that project that that got denied by LAFCO at Long Poak. And the mayor was up in arms about that, said, we're going to lose eight million dollars worth of impact fees. Because now it is a builder's remedy, they have to add an additional twenty percent of low income housing there. And Long Poak may or may not be able to incorporate that into their city. So that's, you know, I'm I'm glad we're going forward with this because that's giving us some some influence over. Over the, the entire region that we're looking at. And that's going to give us this, and like Scott says, a stretch out, does that go down to Brick Barn?
Well, what what I'm, the the urban growth boundary goes beyond Brick Barn, it goes past, past the nursery. But the, what I'm envisioning as a potential sphere of influence to the west goes out a mile from the.
So that's, that's way beyond Brick Barn, okay. All right, and Hudson, I see that you have another question.
It was just a point of clarification because I know that builder's remedy and whatever else is tossed around a lot. But my understanding is builder's remedy kick comes into play on commercially zone property when arena, when they haven't had our housing element.
No, it 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 comes into play, commercial. Residential, and it, I don't know that there's a zoning limitation under builder's remedy. So we don't have to worry about it currently because we have a a certain. So we don't have to worry about it currently because we have a, a certified housing element. We, we're not subject to.
It's only if our housing element is adequate.
And, and ours is not.
And ours is not.
But that's not to say that we might not have a different outcome. You know, we were real close to, we could have received a builder's remedy for about a month and a half because HCD seemed to be processing things very slowly.
But I just want everybody to be clear because they, they, you know, it's like a sword of Damocles over our head or something. We got to be cautious of. But it's only if our housing element is not.
That's correct. Yes, it is.
But that was agricultural land. Lafco refused to turn into residential and they got builder's remedy of it. Yep. Okay, anything else? Any input from the public on this?
Hey, one more question.
Oh, yeah, John, go ahead.
Um, hypothetical, if, if somebody just to the west of us said, went and decided to put in. A low cost housing and went to the state like they did in, you know, in our city. If somebody just outside went and did that, would we be obligated to serve them?
I, I'd, I'd have to say it's going to depend on the circumstances, the proximity, the, the zoning, whether or not the county is going to approve it. There's a bunch of different things to come into play, but Greg, you have any?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, that would have been my answer as well is. Given all of the state housing laws and given what kind of pressure might the county be on, uh, under to approve it. It's possible that the county could approve it and it would be turned over to us and told. Get water and sewer to that because you're the closest. We just don't know. Um, we would have to study an individual project it, because hypotheticals are just too hard in this. Yeah, no, it's, it's a good thought.
Yeah. Keeps us up at night for me anyway.
Okay, so this is just a, uh, any other question from, uh, council for staff?
Will this presentation be made available? Is this going to be on the engage?
The, the presentation, I, I'll see if I can post a link to the engage page for this. I, I don't know if we can edit down, I'll try and edit down this, this discussion. Um, but certainly the, the information, the staff report, all the exhibits, uh, anything that's come up to now is already on the engage page. Um, and if, if public doesn't know how to get to the engage page, if you simply go to the city's website, uh, cityofbuellton.com. Uh, scroll down to the middle of the page. There's a group of about eight boxes. One of them has the city seal in it and it says Buellton Engage. And if you punch that button, it will take you to a, a listing of projects. And the one you're looking for is Urban Growth Boundary Update and all the information you need is there.
Okay, unless there's any other discussion or objection, I'm going to go ahead and have Scott go ahead and proceed with. The direction is recommended on your staff report and go. The public input and all the other things that we're going to have to do before we get this off about it. Okay. Okay, let's move on to number five. That'll be authorization, authorization of contract extension. With K O A to prepare Caltrans traffic study. And this once again will be Scott Walker.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
Why don't you hold that for one sec?
Oh.
Um, stop.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, it might be nice. Okay. Actually, can we, can we?
And I want to wait for.
Recession for five minutes?
Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely.
No, there's nobody on, nobody on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, as you'll recall, a couple of months ago, I notified the council that I was going to be reaching out to. Our traffic consultant that helped us with our circulation element. Studies that were done like two, a year and a half ago or so, K O A Crane. They were the ones that had come up with the concept that we've come to refer to as the skinny two forty-six. Uh, we reached out to them and asked them to prepare a scope of work based on. Discussions that we have had with Caltrans regarding what studies might be needed in order to. Gain approval of Caltrans to make certain improvements, which might include the narrowing of lanes, the installation of. Uh, other improvements such as bike lanes, widened sidewalks, medians, those sorts of traffic calming, uh, measures. Uh, Caltrans was very open to the concept, but Caltrans told us that they would require the city to provide certain studies. To ensure that their standards were being met. So we approached K O A Crane with a request to determine what studies would be necessary. Uh, they have returned to us with a proposal. To, um, conduct the studies that are required. The, uh, the grand total on this proposal that, that they presented us is fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars. Uh, which may seem like a lot. There is a lot of roadway on Highway two forty-six and a lot of places to study. But they are going to run the gamut of studies that Caltrans has asked for in order to accomplish some of the goals that we have asked them to look at. This is absolutely necessary if we're going to. Um, continue any discussions with Caltrans that involve, uh, changes to the roadway sections. That involve any kind of hard improvements. Uh, we've got to have this study, uh, under our belt. So, um, we have the proposal before you this evening. Again, the, the total is not to exceed fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars. And I am recommending that the city council, um, authorize the execution of this agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to count. Any questions for staff from Lisa?
Just one, how long do they anticipate this process is going to take? I didn't see that in.
Not long. Let me take a look here. It's in here someplace real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it will happen relatively quickly within the next several months. Because they have to go out and they have to do the counts. I'm sorry, I, I should have, uh. Been better prepared for that question.
Sorry.
Rose, weigh in if you have enough, if you have a thought on this right off the bat here.
Are we talking months?
We're talking months.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're not, not a large number of months, but we're not talking about weeks and we're not talking about.
Right.
A year.
Year, right. And we're anticipating, you know, like a few months. It's hard to pin down a schedule because we are dealing with Caltrans and the back and forth it's going to take to go through them. Uh, but I think if our minds. And as we've discussed with K O A is we'd like to have it completed hopefully by summer. So we can, um, we're, we're currently pursuing grants for design and for construction. So we'd like to get the ball rolling, rolling so that we can implement and put those timelines down in our locations as well.
Yes, they have not identified, uh, at least in, in the proposal I'm looking at here. I, it doesn't look like they've identified a firm timeframe for that.
All I see is on page five, it says something like. Three week schedule from authorization and receipt. So I think that's just for them to do the actual study, not us to get everything we need.
Right, that's, that's task one, the, um, list of potential measures and then responses to questions. And then they'll launch into their, their Caltrans discussions and their data collection.
I just wanted to make sure we could get what, we weren't talking years.
No, no, no.
And I think we can keep some pressure on and we get it.
We, we will. They, they've been, they've been, they were very happy to come back and, and give us this proposal. It took them a little longer than we wanted them to, but, but they're excited because they, they, they look at this as a very beneficial project. John?
Uh, the, the grants that we're looking for and I don't understand the skinny deal, but that's just making obstacles in the highway.
It's, the, the term skinny two forty-six was coined by the, by, by K O A as part of their process. When we were looking at, at how to deal with traffic control issues on two forty-six. And one of the things they looked at was the narrowing of the traffic lanes. Uh, possibly the narrowing of the median with the, with the thought that, uh, under typical traffic engineering. Uh, wisdom, narrower lanes result in slower traffic, especially if you've got other. Things in the roadway, bike lanes, for instance, or medians or those sorts of things. People tend to be a little more. A little more cautious as they approach those and slow their speeds down. So. Um, that's what they're, they're going to be looking at whether or not the traffic volumes at different locations within the city. Meet Caltrans standards for those types of improvements.
And the, and the question of the grants, as, uh, Rob said, we've got some grants to work on, was that, are there already plans? In. What would we get the grant for?
So we submitted a, a grant application for the North County Measure A Safe Routes to School Program. Um, for this project, we don't have, in this particular application, we don't have to have. The plans already drawn up and, and, and provided. Uh, we just provided description of what we are intending to do. The application is for design for the project and knowing that the first phase is this conceptual and the Caltrans. Feasibility study, so to speak, and, and, and vetting. And that's part of our local match towards that grant. Uh, future grants that we plan to apply to is for the ATP program. For the construction portion of it so that we can get the project rolling and moving forward or construction of the first phase.
Yeah, so this is basically on us, John. I don't, this is not going to be covered by any kind of a grant. Well, the grants that we're talking about are going to come from the design and actual maybe construction and, and the equipment. And then, you know, the contract, et cetera, et cetera. This, this for them is on us.
Right, but we're going to do with all this planning and everything goes our way and we do all this studying. And then we write all our drawings and do all our planning and Calcar, Caltrans can say, no, thank you. We're not going to do it.
Sorry.
And they don't, do they have any obligation that to change what we do?
Uh, and I'll, sorry, Rose, I'll jump in here. I've had conversations with them and they're all for this. So it's not like we're, this is what they wanted us to do initially. And say, okay, you guys do the study and, and on all of this and this, if this is feasible. Well, how, what the traffic circulation is going to be, what your designs, et cetera, et cetera. So they're basically having us do this survey on our dime. And then they're going to, and then they're going to come back to the table with us because they are. Um, and I, and I've talked to not only Scott, Edes is the Caltrans District Five Director. You know, he's for it and so is, oh, oh, John Ol, I see.
Oleneck.
Oleneck. John Oleneck, Oleneck is basically his. Vice director for lack of, I can't, I don't. I can't, he's a director of something, substance, something. He's not District Five. So. To your, so I think to your point, you're thinking is this going to be good money after bad. Caltrans has already given us the, the go ahead on this and said, if you guys do this circulation, because we can't. We can't find a budget to do this for you, but if you do it, then we'll partner up with you on making this out. So.
Assuming that the study shows that the thresholds are met.
Right.
And if the study shows that the thresholds aren't met.
Then there's no way they'll allow the improvements to take place. But there's no way to know whether we, we can do that until we do the study. So.
Right.
And then if they come back and say, no, we're going to stop there and go home or we're going to start another campaign to get another study to. Have more planners and more.
Not much worth doing new studies until the circumstances change.
But this is the last study. We're going to try to get this slowed down and we're not going to keep doing it.
I would be opposed. If Caltrans comes back to us and says, no, we don't want to do this, I would be opposed. But, and, and then at that point, I would agree with you and be throwing good money after bad. So. This is the initial phase that we have to go through to get Caltrans to meet with us and say, okay. We get it. We see what you're trying to do. Let's go forward with it. Okay. But after that, I agree with you. We're not going to do it again. Hudson?
I'm happy, I'm happy this came forward. It's just, uh, it's good. And I, I do see that, uh. Uh, it looks like under task three, it looks like this idea of like getting the lanes to meander and, and medians is a no go.
Yeah, Caltrans flat out called us out on that one and said, if, if you're looking at meandering the lane or, or shifting the lanes, that isn't going to happen.
But at least we asked.
We did. It was asked and, and they answered us in no uncertain terms.
Well, I just want to say thank you for everybody who did put whatever effort to try and like see if this could go forward. So I'm happy to see it.
I'd like to make a point for the.
Is it, is it, you have a question or is the point?
Well, the, the point is we went and did a lot of work and put a new island in and the guy almost got killed the first day they put it in. And then, uh, with a motorcycle. And then now we've had the, the sign knocked down and it hasn't been replaced. And now there's no reflectors at night to even see the island. Cause I come that way, you know, from Long Poak at night. And you can't even, it's not even delineated.
Yeah.
And so they're not helping us any. There isn't something that we've got, whatever we asked for and thought was going to be so cool in the middle of the road. Isn't, is just a, um, a little. Rock, it's a, might as well be a boulder out there.
Yeah.
That's my.
That, that's a conversation for a different day.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that. I'm not a real.
And also is there anything we can do to get them to get off and, and do their, you know, make it what it's supposed to be, which is. You know, they don't need, like I said, they don't even delineate. Somebody put a traffic going out there and a, something out of a truck stopped. Cause you can't see it at night.
Rose, can we contact Caltrans and ask them about, come out and take a look at that media?
Putting things in the middle, but that, that is a conversation for a different day. Uh, David, you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, it was the timing situation. Under task six, it says that. Traffic volume counts will be collected at the sixteen study intersections during the seven to nine AM and four to six PM peak periods on a typical weekday. Yada, 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 including when schools are in regular session.
Yes.
So I was just curious, this would mean either it has to be done by June or it can't be accomplished until fall, correct?
Well, the counts are the first thing that need to be done. So, yeah, so the, the counts will need to be done by June.
Okay, so that.
Yeah.
That's, that's a reasonable timeline for us. We feel like, I, because I, the concern just with Rose bringing up the like drop, dragging of feet. That is something that is feasible for them to accomplish this school year.
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. So that's not.
That's just the first stage, but it, but they, they can get that done before.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to know, it's like, is it just all or nothing until this gets pushed out of the hall type of thing? Okay, that's all I was curious about. Thank you.
Okay, and I do not have any questions. I'm glad this is going forward because, you know, Scott and I have honestly been talking to Caltrans. Quite some time about doing something, uh, to this. And, and, you know, just to refresh people's memories. That, that, that road is a hundred and eight feet wide. So when people look down there, it looks like a, you know, landing strip for a seven thirty-seven. And so. Um, matter of fact, I think you probably could land a seven thirty-seven if there were no poles there. Um, so yes, it needs to get squeezed down, at least it, it, and, and all of us know that if you are on a highway. And you got the two lane, everybody speeds up, you get the one lane, everybody slows down. So I think visually that's what you're trying to accomplish here. So at least we need to get this money going forward. Uh, anything from the public? Any input from the public on this?
Not that I can see. I have no connection.
Nothing, nothing on.
Never mind. Uh, anything further from staff?
Um, not on a business level.
Okay, I will bring it back to the council for a motion to approve or deny this.
I move to approve.
Well, second.
Is that you, John?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, council member, member Louis.
Hi.
Council member Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
And Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi.
Sorry.
Name test just now.
Total, total play. Okay. Uh, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just a couple of items for you this evening. I wanted to alert you to some items coming up on the next. Uh, meeting, the March fourteenth agenda. We have, um. Several items, just, just as a heads up, be on the lookout for a, a public hearing on our call for review ordinance, which was discussed. Previously and was brought to the planning commission already. We will also likely be looking at an update to our joint use agreement with the school district regarding the recreation center. And the, um, uh, facilities at Haunted and Oak Valley and how we utilize those. And that's assuming we get, um, final information from the district on the, the format of that agreement. And then, uh, lastly, we're expecting a time extension or a public hearing on the time extension of the hub project located at the end of Industrial Way. Um, those should all be on the next, uh, meeting, um, be on the lookout. We'll, we'll adjust that, let you know if, if that's different. Um, also March seventeenth upcoming here, we have the. Um, also, March seventeenth upcoming here, we have the Chamber of Commerce's annual Wine and Chili Fest, which I believe is held at Flying Flags. And just put that on everyone's calendar.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. Okay, Scott? Uh, I mean, Greg, anything for me?
Nothing for me.
Okay, then we'll adjourn this meeting and the next meeting will be on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at six PM.